Cameras on, or it maybe did, there we go. All right.
Right.
Hey, can you hear us?
Anthony, can you see and hear us?
Yep.
Thank you.
There's nodding too. Are we live then?
We are live.
Okay, I'll go ahead and I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Happy New Year, everybody, and welcome to the City of Tom Waters meeting for January ninth, two thousand twenty-four. It's seven o'clock or a little past. Our meeting is called to order. Start with roll call. Commissioner Edwards is excused. Commissioner Kirkpatrick?
Here.
Mr. Schumacher? Mr. Staff?
Here.
Tobias?
Here.
Commissioner Varela?
Here.
And me, Commissioner Robbins. Great, and it looks like we also have Mary Heather online, too. Any changes to our agenda tonight for anybody? Let's go to approval of our minutes from December twelfth. December twelfth, two thousand twenty-three. Any discussion or
Who ruled the minutes?
Commissioner Tobias, hold on a second.
Okay, that was Commissioner Kirkpatrick, seconded by Commissioner Tobias to approve the minutes for the Planning Commission and our joint city council meeting of December twelfth, two thousand twenty-three. Last call for discussions. Okay, everybody who approves our motion to approve the minutes for twelve, excuse me, December twelfth, two thousand twenty-three, please say aye.
Aye.
Good, no, any opposed? All right, minutes are approved. Thanks, everybody. Any commissioners' reports? Right along. Managers' report.
All right, so just a couple of things. I forwarded all the commissioners the current version of the Attorney General's, I don't want to say advice, recommendations on dealing with finance issues. We'll touch on that, I think, during our managers' report the next meeting. Yep. Related to the comprehensive plan update, through December twenty-eighth, we had seven hundred and eighty-two responses to our survey. We're still getting responses, so we're well over eight hundred now. By the end of this week, we're hoping to have Communications is putting together a report to sort of summarize the general responses we were getting and so forth, so we have a little bit better way of looking at it, rather than, we also have a full survey to look at, but there's going to be a shortened memo dealing with that. We also have scheduled an open house, in person and also online here on Wednesday, January thirty-first, at seven o'clock. When we did the survey, we asked people what would be good days of the week and times and so forth. Thursdays and Wednesdays seem to be the best days, seems to work best for us, too, because we have the Tuesday night meetings. So I just want to let you know that that will be coming up. We're working on the content of that right now and working on the outreach as part of that process. That is, it will be the first of a number of different outreaches.
That's some good response. Any, Brad, did you, before I opened it up here, did you hear from anybody in the public, either by phone or email or anything?
Not in regard to this meeting or the topics on this meeting.
Is there anybody here tonight who we need to open up for?
No attendees.
All right, so that takes care of public comment, too. Let's go on to item number eight, which is our two thousand twenty-five comprehensive plan update for our transportation element, and that would be Assistant Director Ames.
So a quick introduction to Mary Heather.
Oh, go ahead.
My name is Brad Meddred, I'm manager at the city. This is the last of our phase one discussions of the existing comprehensive plan. We are in the process of making the transition to talking about the changes and amendments that we're proposing. Those will come out probably towards the end of next month. Your second meeting in February is when we're going to start that process. We're still working internally on doing all that work as part of this process. But the transportation plan is the, next to the land use element, in my mind, is probably one of the most important ones for the jurisdiction, because it is where a lot of the jurisdiction's monies go to in terms of capital facilities, guiding future development and redevelopment of properties. And so Mary Heather has graciously allowed herself to be available to walk through the existing plan, answer any questions you may have, and take any questions on things that we really need to be paying attention to, in addition to all those things that we've listed that we're going to be looking at. So, Mary Heather?
All right, good evening. As Brad said, my name is Mary Heather Ames, and I am Assistant Transportation and Engineering Director. I'm going to talk a little bit about our transportation element. There we go. Yes, okay. Sorry, I have a dog here that got very excited. I'm sorry.
We celebrate a lot of small things, so.
Okay, good. So this evening, I would like to talk about the Growth Management Act transportation plan goals. Those are the things we'll be addressing in the new element, but have also addressed in the existing. Present the current version of the plan, consider specific issues that we'll be looking at as we move forward, how to incorporate diversity, equity, and inclusion throughout, and some guidance materials. Oh, boy. Okay, so the Growth Management Act has a transportation goal. The, it requires that the city demonstrates that each element in its comprehensive plan meets the relevant planning goals within the act. So transportation has one relevant goal, but those, the fifteen total, guide the development and adoption of the city's comprehensive plan and development regulations, and they're not listed in order of priority, so we don't need to either feel bad or happy that transportation is number three. So transportation goal was updated in two thousand twenty-three by the state legislature to add reducing greenhouse gas emissions and per capita vehicle miles traveled. Achieving this goal will be done through a combination of goals, policies, and actions in the land use element and the transportation plan. The land use element will contain goals, policies, and actions that ensure coordination with the regional and local transportation plans. So coordination with the new climate element will also be required. This transportation master plan provides the functional framework for realizing Tom Waters' transportation vision, and this is something that we refer to in many of our processes, not only our capital project development, but also through development and implementation of standards across our rights of way. There are quite a few topics that will be addressed as part of the update. We have the general topics here, so as I mentioned before, diversity, equity, inclusion, and environmental justice. Sorry, I'm moving things around here. The, all the elements, the plans, the maps, they're going to be updated, and we'll make sure they're, they continue to be consistent. We also have the shorter individual elements with, with a focus on simplified and updated goals, policies, and implementation action. A new comprehensive plan goal and policy guide will be created for use by staff and policymakers, and mutually agreeable memorandum of agreements between the city and tribes about collaboration and participation in the planning process will be discussed. So those are the general items. In transportation, we've got to update those maps. That's something that we refer to quite a bit, and having them up to date will be wonderful. We update the existing conditions. Things have happened in the last ten years. We'll update planned improvements and future operations to two thousand forty-five, moving into, farther into the future, looking at the transportation improvement program, the financial analysis, our traffic impact fees, our transportation impact fees. And then this, this longer bullet here is about the impacts to state-owned transportation facilities, and this is something that we have done in our previous rounds, so this is not a new thing, but it is kind of an interesting one to be looking not only at our own facilities, but also the state-owned transportation facilities, and we'll use, update our land use assumptions used in estimating travel. We also get to update facilities and service needs, so that will be some inventory of, of what's going on, not only the air, water, ground, but also transit and general aviation, which we do have, of course, the port and the airport. We'll have level of service standards for all our arterials and our transit routes, and for state-owned transportation facilities, we'll have the level of service standards for those, and we'll be identifying specific actions and requirements for bringing locally-owned transportation facilities into compliance if they're below the established level of service standard. We're going to look at forecasts of traffic for at least ten years based on the land use, and then identify those needs that will meet the current and future demands. We are all familiar, and I think you're commission more so than some, at the growth that is happening in Tom Water. We'll also look at the updating the financial analysis, and that's looking at funding capability to, to balance needs against the probable funding resources. We'll be looking at a multi-year financing plan, appropriate parts of which are going to then become our six-year transportation improvement plan, and then we'll have to look at if we don't have the funding that we need, a discussion of how funding can be raised, or how we can look at changing things to make sure that level of service standards continue to be met. The transportation plan, the, the capital facility plan, and the ten-year investment program must be consistent, and will provide a projection of state and local system needs to meet current and future demand. So we're also looking pretty heavily at a pedestrian and bicycle element, and I like the note here, the collaborative efforts to identify and designate planned improvements for pedestrian and bicycle facilities. I met today with inner-city transit on another topic, but, but managed to mention that we were working on this process, and they're excited to work with us, not only on the planning process, but potential future projects where we can increase access to transit, which overall increases biking, biking and walking facilities in Tom Water. So we'll be considering approaches that increase physical activity. There's that active transportation, rather than saying non-motorized transportation, which is a fun change in focus. We'll be describing existing and planned demand management strategies, and, and looking at ways to, to handle demand management. So that could be something like high occupancy vehicle lanes or subsidy programs and parking policies. We'll look at future funding, again, the needs versus what, what is available, and then we'll look at a multi-year financing plan that we, we can compare to the, the six-year transportation improvement program, excuse me, and again, if it falls short, we'll need to look at how we can make it, make it up. We'll also be looking at inter, intergovernmental coordination efforts, identifying lands that are useful for public purposes. We already have in our existing plan those transportation corridors, but looking at open space corridors within and between urban growth areas, updating as needed the process for locating essential public facilities, and updating demand management strategies, as I mentioned. We'll also be looking at the information on pedestrian and bicycle components to include that collaborative, this, I think, is a repeat, I apologize, but.
I thought it was so important.
Well, yeah, exactly, it's worth saying, it's, it is a good one, and I'm very excited about the active transportation element of the work we'll be doing. So we're, speaking of inner-city transit, I mentioned them, we're looking at some sort of turnarounds on Little Rock Road and Old Highway, Old Highway ninety-nine, so that they can expand future services. We'll be looking at the works that Thurston Thrives did and coordinating it, also the Old Highway ninety-nine corridor study, which council has indicated that they, that they're in approval of it, however, it, its adoption will go through this process. We'll be looking at active transportation facilities, transportation demand management, and public transportation services, so that we can meet concurrency. That, that one is an, is an interesting idea, and it's really cool to be adding it to our processes. We'll be looking at equitable implementation, looking at multimodal level of service and that, for the state transportation facilities, impact fee revenue for bike and pedestrian facilities, multimodal level of service for arterials, transit routes, and active transportation facilities. We'll be giving priority to the greatest multimodal safety benefit to each category of roadway users. We will refer to and include the Americans with Disabilities Act transition plan, the ADA transition plan, which I believe was adopted in twenty-one or twenty-two, and with that, there was quite a bit of data collection, so we know the state of our sidewalks and the work that is cut out for us. It's monumental. And we'll be, again, providing funding analysis that includes the state transportation facilities, and that, I think, is a little change from before. It used to be, we would just let, say what, what we thought needed to be done, but this time we get to identify potential funding sources for those state facilities. So a new requirement that we have is incorporating the environmental justice aspect, so special consideration for environmental justice in our goals and policies, which of course will tie into the work we're doing in this transportation plan. So our current transportation master plan addresses many of these topics that we've talked about, and will just need to be updated. So we have the sub-area plans discussion, there are already several sub-area plans, I think this Old Highway ninety-nine would be sort of worked in with those others. We have modes of travel. This plan does talk about cycling and walking. I think we're going to see more focus of that in the new one. Looking at demand and future conditions, and has the goals and policies, of course, the inventory and system performance. It lists capital improvements, which is a, is a section that we refer to, as I mentioned before, when we're developing our capital improvement plans, and it's a, definitely a helpful to see, okay, this is what we need to do. It also, as I mentioned before, comes into play when we have developers, and we're able to say, hey, this is in our plan, it needs to be done, and can help to tie it with development and accomplish some of those things that need to be done. Looks at funding, and then opportunities and needs. So it's a, it's a comprehen, it's, oh, I almost, it's comprehensive, it looks at all the aspects of transportation within Tom Water. Here is a link to the current transportation master plan. I believe that you received a copy of this PowerPoint in your packet, but if you need it, let me know, and I could always email you a link as well. So the Commerce provides transportation guidance materials. This one is your community's transportation system from two thousand twenty-twelve, we'll be referring to that. And then our next steps, which we are actively working on, is getting a consultant onboard, and this says an RFQ. There's been a lot of discussion of the idea of an RFQ versus an RFP, where RFQ is request for qualifications, and RFP is request for proposal. So I believe that we may have settled on a non-cost RFP to be able to get from potential consultants a statement of not only their qualifications to complete the work, but a proposal of how they, how they would like to complete the work, that will give us the chance to evaluate, is their approach similar to the approach that, that Tom Water sees is necessary, without getting into negotiating cost until we've chosen the, the best quality. And that sort of falls under the qualification-based selection process that is in, in place in Washington State for architects and engineers, where this is not necessarily architects and engineers, we felt like this was a good way to approach contracting. So there is a little extra information about contracting in Washington. It's, it fascinates me, and I'm excited about getting this done. So tomorrow, January ten, I will be talking with General Government Committee over the same information, and as Brad said, then moving forward, we'll be getting the, the consultant onboard and then getting to work. And written comments are welcome at any time, if anyone is listening and wants to have, have their say, I think it, this is a, the process that is so important for Tom Water, for, for residents in Tom Water to be residents and, I can't think of the right word, people in Tom Water to be involved in. This is, this is the very foundational way to have an effect on your local city. So Brad's contact information is there, there's an email for a periodic update, and then, of course, our website will be regularly updated with the, the information. So that concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer questions or take comments, whatever you would like.
Commissioner Tobias?
You mentioned about revenue streams. Can you tell us more about what are the primary sources of revenue for the transportation budget, and like what percentage of each, you know, revenue stream makes up the whole? Would you, like, would you say, because you mentioned, like, adding an impact fee for bike lanes, or is it primarily coming from impact fees, the revenue for transportation budget, or?
No, it's actually, so there are probably three main places that we get money. The first and maybe largest would be grant funding, so, and the grant funding comes from, the basis for grant funding is that six-year transportation improvement program that I mentioned a couple of times, so that, that makes us eligible for federal and state grants for those projects. And there's a, like, a regular pot that we receive money from is Surface Transportation Block Grant, STBG funds, or there's a Transportation Alternatives Program, or TA. There's also I'm, I'm blanking for, I believe it's it, I believe it, it has to do with air quality, but I think they're, the acronym is slightly different. So there's also those, those funds, so those, those are like three of the most common grant funds that we receive, and, and many of our projects go from that. Additionally, Tom Water is in the absolutely wonderful position of having a voter-approved transportation benefit district, which is that zero point two percent sales tax that we don't even realize we're contributing, but it, that funds much of our paving, and that's, that's huge in the effect that it has upon the, the state of our roads in Tom Water. And then the third place is those transportation impact fees, and those will depend on development to know how much we have. They also are specifically used on projects that are identified in our transportation impact fee program, so we are taking this opportunity to update that transportation impact fee program while we are updating the master plan. They, they go well together, so this is a good time to do that work. So if you, if you check out our, our advertisement, our request for proposals, you'll see that, that not only are we working on the, the master plan, but also that transportation impact fee program. Does that answer your question?
Indeed so, thank you.
Okay.
Commissioner Varela has a question.
Amy, Heather, real quick, for this plan, and maybe outside of the scope, but is there a plan to address connecting our transportation to the larger transportation, for example, like the sounder, or any light rail that would get personnel from here to Seattle or other locations?
That is not handled within the master plan, however, those discussions do happen facilitated by TRPC, the Thurston Regional Planning Council, so discussions like those end up happening on a regional basis, rather than specifically within Tom Water.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Yeah.
Mary Heather, is it correct that, actually, this year, they're updating that regional plan, or in the process of finishing the update to that? So, again, that's, that's really where we need to cast a broader net on the broader picture of things that we need on a regional level.
Yeah, the, the regional plan is being updated. There has been a specific study to do the, the question of the high speed between our area and Seattle, or our area and the airport kind of idea, or even just to Tacoma. So the, the regional transportation plan is more focused within our region, however, there are studies that are talking about connecting to Pierce County and beyond.
Mr. Staff?
This might be a kind of complicated question, but do we look closely at pulling traffic from I five, and how that impacts our transportation, or have we ever looked at how to funnel more traffic or transportation, people that are being transported to Tom Water for more tourism, or more of those outside dollars coming in? Is that something that you would look at, or we would look at in the master plan at all?
You know, what we would look at in the transportation plan is making sure that when those people come to spend their money or participate in our activities, that the, the roads are ready and able to handle the traffic. So we look at, that, that ends up being when we're looking at the land use and making sure that the roads can support the land use that is in, in existence. We end up looking at them and making sure, are we, that's where concurrency comes in, of course, so if a project comes in, then we can say, well, you're going to potentially be pulling all these customers in, so we need to make sure that the roads are ready for that. So it's, I think that the, the overall comprehensive plan addresses that, and then the transportation plan specifically says, how are we going to make sure that it's going to work when all these people come to Tom Water?
Thank you.
It's more likely that that discussion of how to draw more people to the city would be part of the economic development plan.
Yeah.
And that discussion, I do know, because of, number one, that pulls from, you know, the lodging tax and a bunch of other things that are important for that, so I think those questions are important, but that would be part of economic.
Yeah, I just wondered how much it played into our actual transportation, or if we've looked at that analysis, if we do get that influx of people. or if we've looked at that analysis, if we do get that influx of people, how to best utilize that with our roadways and public transportation.
I guess kind of as a follow-on, I'd be curious to know if there are, you know, when a develop, some developments have to do an origin destination study maybe or traffic analysis or things like that that are a little more intensive. I wonder if there's a way to take a composite look or, you know, kind of roll up the look of some current ones, fairly recent, you know, that are, you know, looking at the next few years and take a look or a snapshot, whether through the economic development element or dovetailed through the transportation element to get a picture of what that, you know, where are people moving? Where are people likely to be wanting to travel?
Yeah.
In our area? I have a little bit of a follow-up on bringing on the consultant. And the easy one first is what's your approximate timeline? But then I'm wondering what kind of qualifications are you looking for? And is having some sort of regional transportation planning part of the mix?
Okay, so we're hoping to advertise as soon as we can. We'll give a few weeks for them to prepare their responses. And then, so I'm thinking we're probably a month to, to out from being able to get started on our work. Just with the timeframe that, you know, each step takes time and getting signatures and reviews and everything. So as far as qualifications go, there are firms that have the reputation of doing this type of work because so many of us cities need help doing this. Not all cities have in-house ability to do a full master plan. So we'll be looking at people who have experience doing this type of work and who have had success in that work. So I'm making sure that they have the, not only the technical expertise, but also the understanding of how to work with members of the public, how to use that feedback, assemble all the different parts into one package. So I think there are well-qualified firms to do this work. I'm confident that we'll be able to get someone onboard. I don't know that it's going to be someone who's based in Tom Water necessarily, but definitely within the state, there are many who couldn't do this type of work.
Great, thanks. Commissioner Staff.
I'm just curious, how much of this overlaps with the Destination Master Plan that's being done for Thurston County? Would that group be a group that would be considered or is that completely different type of work?
The Destination Master Plan, are you referring to the, like, working?
A regional plan with TRPC.
With, yeah, for the Experience Olympian Beyond Destination Tourism Plan, which they did an impact study for a lot of this work. I'm just wondering if that's something to look at? Because that data might already, or some of that data might already be available since that work was just done a couple of months ago.
I have a suspicion on.
No, no.
Okay, very quickly, TRPC staff, we contract with them for a lot of different things. For this particular work, they probably wouldn't be able to handle it because of their workload. We definitely will be pulling, you know, recent studies like for the Destination Study and all these other things that are trying into our work. But the likelihood it will be a private consulting firm with some level of experience on transportation.
Okay.
And Mary Heather, it'd be important distinction, you've got the engineers who are very good with the numbers and you've got to have people. So it's sort of a special combination.
Thank you.
I was only going to say that we would be, potentially we'll be, of course, using the model that TRPC houses for the region and that that provides the basis for some, or if not much, of the analysis that will be done.
Okay.
Mr. Patrick.
Yeah, my question is sort of a chicken and egg question, but I'm wondering if you let off with the fact that we're going to have a major increase in population over the next several years. And those people got to live somewhere. And where intercity transit goes, that's where the apartments are being built. So since intercity transit doesn't come here, except on one and a half routes, there's really not the pull for a developer to come in here and build an apartment, unless it's on one of the few routes that we have. Is there any way to work with intercity transit to maybe get some upfront routes that would bring developers into Tom Water to build apartments in places which they can't build them now because there's no way to get to and from them?
I, so that's, I mean, it is, it's a great question. And it's a good thing to be thinking about for sure. When I talked with intercity transit earlier today, we talked a little bit about that and the idea that there are potentially areas, even not even apartments, but just developments of houses that are outside of their regular service area because, say, it's farther or they're having trouble getting their buses turned around or it just doesn't make sense for whatever reason. So they're looking at other methods of serving those areas. There are lots of different methodologies that can be used there. So they were even talking about someday, and I don't want to, I don't want to promise something that I have no authority to promise, but we talked about the idea that maybe Tom Water could be a pilot program for some of those to be able to say, we're increasing the transit service and we're doing it in an innovative way and this is how we're handling it. So I don't know that that would put the buses there to make the developers try to put in more apartments. But I think that intercity transit is willing to work with us and look at ways of serving that maybe aren't the traditional bus every so often. But maybe there's another way of handling service to more customers. The other thing is that it kind, they go hand in hand, right, transportation and land use. So the more development we have, then the more customer base and the more that intercity transit will want to serve us. So they kind of, it is the chicken and the egg, like you said. And we'll have to see, you know, as we have more growth within Tom Water, which we are having, will we have more bus service or transit service within our city?
I think as Lacey expands their transportation north out of Hawksbury, they're opening up huge areas which are going to be much more attractive to the developer than Tom Water.
I think it also comes down to a political component, which is, you know, more pressure from the city council on intercity transit to say, hey, you told us we need population, we've got, we're getting the population or we're going to have the population very shortly. Let's talk seriously about expansion. Because when Lacey expanded, when intercity expanded into Hawksbury, it was partially, you know, numbers that did it. There was also a lot of political pressure, like, here, brand-new community, why aren't you serving us? And I think that's a component we really haven't pursued yet to the degree that I think we probably are ready to do that because we now have the numbers.
I'd be curious to know how far we can go. You know, I'm kind of harking back to Councilmember Dahlhoff's encouragement to, of us as planning commission to push on ideas. And I'm wondering how far we can go with connecting people to places with, through means that might not involve intercity transit. In other words, you know, providing some sort of incentive for, you know, the Uber-type people, the Uber-type drivers. Or maybe there's some other model that's out there that are, you know, it's not public sector, but would still meet, help us meet our community's needs for travel. Can we think of that? Can we explore that in our plans and analyses?
I think that's completely appropriate, especially since the state is now requiring that we plan for and accommodate all income groups for housing. And obviously, the farther down you are on the scale, the less likely you're going to have access to maybe car or something else you need, the alternatives. We don't necessarily have the ability to go vertical on every single transit route to meet that demand. There's going to be areas outside of that we're going to have to figure out how to serve.
Right.
So that's where I think another part of the discussion and part of the political side of it will be, you've told us we need to do this, let's want these people actually to be able to go to work and school and access.
Just, you know, explore some of those innovations, those out-of-the-box kinds of things, that out-of-the-bus kind of thing.
Well, and I wonder, do we have a map of this is where we are today and this is where we'd like to be? Or would that be part of this packet where here, here in the next X number of years, we would like to see these routes added by bus? And then we can look at it and say, this is where the bus would stop. What are those additional segments based off that? Is that something that we either have or something that we're looking at getting? To kind of ghost map out, this is what we would like to see with this population or this timeframe?
I think that's something we could develop. We don't currently have that outside of what, say, intercity transit has currently with their planning. I think it's something we can do if we choose to.
And we could go to intercity and say, this is what we would like to see? And then it would open those discussions. Because I'm a very visual person, so seeing a visual of that, it would be like, oh, wow, here's where the disparity lies, here's where that equity is not being met and we are excluding all of these folks. So I just think that that's a very impactful thing, especially to take to intercity transit and say, this is what we're looking at. And they probably open up and start having more conversations with, ah, we see where we can meet this need or how we could connect these pieces. That's just my thought.
So something that we do have that would be potentially useful, it's not bus-specific, but what we do have is an inventory of our sidewalks. And we have the plan of where we want sidewalks to be. And something that we have to think about as far as bus service goes is, sure, it's all well and good if a bus goes somewhere, but if you can't get to the bus stop, it's not going to do you any good. And that's where I think us as a city, our interface with the bus comes in is making sure that we have those facilities for the walking and rolling to a transit stop or to a place where you can access other types of transportation. Because at, you know, at every point, every day, a person is a pedestrian, right? At some time in every trip, a person is a pedestrian. So especially those beginning and ends. And those are the places where this plan potentially can be very helpful. And we have not only that inventory, but we have, of course, in the previous plan, the looking forward to the ideal scenario. And that will be able to update that in the new one as well.
Yeah, and I think that's a perfect overlay to put on a map and say, okay, now we need these other routes to even get to this piece. So I think that's just a great component to add to the transportation map overall.
Yeah, another thing that feeds into the recent state requirements coming down, that say we have to, within a half mile of transit service, thou shalt do this. You know, that's great if you're in a flat, you know, sidewalk-connected area. It doesn't work if there's a river between you and the transit line. So I think just, we're going to have to do that anyway. That is part of our prying processes to make sure that if we are accommodating all the state requirements, that it's actually going to be workable to people living in those situations.
I think the people of Tom Water would be appreciative to look at a map and say, oh, wow, we can actually get here, we can actually do that. Because, I mean, that's a lot of people's question is, how do I get there? Pull up Google Maps and that can connect a lot of the pieces together as well. Thank you.
Are there other questions or comments?
Thank you, Mary Heather.
Thank you.
You will be coming back later in the year at some point.
Yes, I will be looking forward to it.
All righty.
A little background on where we are with state contracts and state grant funding. The reason why we didn't jump and get going on the transportation is we're relying on state funds to pay for a good portion of that. And we just found out as of the end of December that we have gotten the awards. Now we're in the process of the state sorting out what the details of the contract are. We've discovered that if we get too excited and issue an RFP and go forward, the state may say, no, actually, we want to do it this way. Causes havoc. That's why we're kind of delaying more than I like to getting going on this. But we will be going out for the, the RFP is out right now for the middle housing work. Your RFP will be going out shortly, the one for economic development update will be going out shortly. And at the end of the month, the climate mitigation, the climate element work will be going out. So that's sort of like, okay, now we can really get going and get the outside help we need to get working on these things.
Oh, let's see, I guess we're ready to move on. And item number nine is our discussion on our briefing, rather, I guess, on ordinance number O twenty twenty-three dash zero seventeen or TMC eighteen point thirty-eight, or I'm not sure what F C means, but floodplain. And that would be Erica.
All right.
And you get to see the exquisite details of our filing system.
Always fascinating.
Hopefully this one matches mine. Okay, so.
Did I grab the wrong one?
No, looks good. So tonight, we're going to be talking about updates to our floodplain ordinance. A little bit of a background. It is totally different.
Okay.
Hold up. There we go, that's the one. Already presented to city council tonight and I had an energy drink really late and I apologize. Yeah, it didn't really do much for energy, but my nervous system is pretty shot. All right, so close to three hundred towns, cities, counties, and tribes in the state participate in the Federal Emergency Management Agency, or FEMA's National Flood Insurance Program. Continued enforcement of the city's floodplain management regulations, also known, founded in Tom Water Municipal Code eighteen thirty-eight, allows FEMA to make federally-backed flood insurance available to property owners within the city. As a condition of participation in this program, communities are required to adopt and enforce flood hazard reduction regulations that meet the minimum requirements of the National Flood Insurance Program. In May of twenty twenty-three, city staff completed a FEMA floodplain community assistance visit, assistance visit with the State Department of Ecology staff to review the city's floodplain ordinance. The community assistance visit determined that overall our ordinance was in good standing, but there were some minor updates we needed to make. On November eighth, twenty twenty-three, FEMA notified the city of the final flood determinations for Thurston County, Washington, and incorporated areas, which includes the city of Tom Water. The FEMA flood hazard determinations for the city are also considered final. The flood insurance study report and the flood insurance rate maps covering the city become effective May eighth, twenty twenty-four. So that saying is the maps were updated, correct?
The maps and the supporting studies behind it. There were some minor tweaks to the floodplain along with the shoots. Not significant enough to, you know, overall change.
You mean tweaks from the previous maps?
Prior to May 8, the effective date of the new flood insurance study and the flood insurance rate map, the city must amend its existing floodplain regulations to be more consistent with the model ordinance for floodplain management, the Endangered Species Act to maintain its eligibility, and the National Flood Insurance Program. So what it's saying is, we need to update our ordinance and our codes to, by the time the maps become effective and the flood insurance study becomes effective. Included in the packet for tonight and the staff report, it includes summaries of the 15 proposed amendments, the code sections amended or added, and proposed amendment language. There were three new sections added for detached accessory structures, storage of materials and equipment, and penalties. A notice of intent for ordinance number O 2023-017 was sent to the State Department of Commerce on December 14, 2023. A CEPA checklist for ordinance number O 2023-017 was completed December 13 and routed to staff for completion of a determination of nonsignificance in 2024. We did get a determination of nonsignificance from staff, so for the CEPA.
This is a standard process for any time we do an ordinance. We have to send a copy of the ordinance ahead to Commerce. Commerce, in turn, sends it out to all the state agencies. If anybody has any comments before adoption, they have the 60 days to get back to us and say, make a change, answer questions. Very rarely do we get something back from them. On the CEPA process, we have to do a non-projects environmental review of everything to determine any impacts from the language of the regulatory changes on the environment. So for the most part, it's usually left to the actual projects coming forward, say, building the building, putting the parking lot in, and so forth, to be when we actually do mitigation. But we have to go through this step for all the ordinance reductions.
I was taking feedback from when we had the joint session with city council. So this is kind of a new slide I want to incorporate into my briefing. Suggested work session discussion topics. So the next time we meet to go over the floodplain ordinance, I would like to ask that you review the proposed amendments and the new sections within the staff report. Are the proposed amendments clear and digestible? Is it easy to determine the standards for developing in the floodplain and know what will be required? And then when we meet to have that work session, you can provide comments or questions to staff. You could also email us prior to, so we can answer it there. This presentation is a little shorter. I didn't include all the draft language and amendments. It is in the staff report. So we really want to utilize that staff report and all the language in there.
One thing to be aware of, when we're dealing with things like floodplains or anything required by either the state or federal government, it's usually a matter of us using their language to make sure that they find it acceptable. So our ability to make language tweaks is more limited in these cases than it is, say, when we do city-specific things. But at the same time, if something's just not, we have to make sure it is.
And so for next steps, we have a work session scheduled for January 23. We, depending on how that goes, we have a tentative hearing scheduled for February 13. And that concludes the first presentation I have for you guys this evening, everyone this evening.
Any questions or any topics that...
Just a quick, oh, go ahead.
Oh, I was going to say, you mentioned about the CEPA review, staff found a nonsignificance. What is the criteria for significance versus nonsignificance in a CEPA review?
The initial threshold is if an environmental impact statement is required. So when you say something is significant, that means you need to do a full-blown environmental impact statement that reviews everything in exquisite detail and provides alternatives for that. When CEPA was originally issued or was approved in '71, that was much more common, because there wasn't the host of regulations that exist now to deal with these issues. EISs are much, 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 much less common now. Some jurisdictions do an EIS, for example, on the whole comprehensive plan update or something else like that. So really, this is a threshold to determine whether or not, first of all, if the environmental impact statement is required. If not, the next level would be a mitigated determination of nonsignificance, which would be saying, well, if we do these particular things, any of the impacts of what we're proposing is addressed, and we don't have to go to the full EIS level. That's really used on the project level. For example, if I'm putting in a large apartment complex, the EIS may say, as part of your impacts, you need to fix this interchange and to this level, or, you know, those very specific things. It's really not something we see a lot of when we're dealing with things like the ordinance updates and other things.
Those first two steps that you mentioned of getting out and notifying all the agencies and then giving them 60 days, when the legislature chooses to say CEPA is not needed in this particular area, do you still go through that process?
Yeah. So there are two different processes. The CEPA process, which has its own notification list and agencies and people interested parties in the city that are contacted as part of that process. Then the notice of intent process, which is actually under the Growth Management Act. It's its own separate notification process, and Commerce is the lead agency for growth management. And so any regulations or plans or anything like that fall under that notification. So that's the distinction between the two.
I hope it's kind of a quick question, but that is, how frequently does FEMA update its maps or its, in other words, how often will the city or any other jurisdiction have to go through this? Is it every decade? Is it...
Reactionary process.
Well, the last time we went through an ordinance process similar to this was in 2015. So about six or eight-year cycle, I think, depending upon...
Or is there something that triggers it, like major landform change?
Potentially, but it's a federally-driven process that I haven't delved into.
FEMA is, from a federal standpoint, an extremely small organization. They do almost everything by contract. They hire somebody else to do it. So what you really have is an office full of contract managers. That's FEMA.
Well, I guess more practically, for Tomwater, we probably haven't seen our, the actual floodplains change all that much, have we?
Not really. I mean, again...
There might be more development.
There may be more development with them.
But the landforms haven't changed.
Correct. Not since, for the example of a landform changing would be something below Henderson Boulevard Park, where the river can't move, it feels like.
Right, yeah.
North of there, it's much more constricted by development and the...
Channelized, yeah, okay.
So you're right, we really don't have to deal with that that much, because for the most part, it's already all.
Okay. All right, well, looking forward to that then. Other questions on our briefing, getting ready for next time? Turn the screen to see if I can... All right. Let's move on to item number 10, which is our, I'm on the wrong one. Yep, this is it. Which is Resolution Number R 2024-001, our fourth edition of the Hazards Mitigation Plan for Thurston Region, and our portion of the, the Tomwater portion of the act.
Yep, you got it. So when I first started way back when, I think this was one of the first projects that was assigned to me. So it's been a while since we've talked to it, but let's go on. So this is the fourth edition of the Hazards Mitigation Plan for the city of Tomwater. It outlines strategies to reduce the risk of the most destructive natural hazards, such as floods, earthquakes, and wildfires that threaten the area. The plan's goals, policies, and actions, if implemented, will minimize losses and protect people and the community assets from future disasters. A little bit of a background. To manage risk, contain costs, and promote sustainable communities, the federal government, FEMA, has enacted hazard mitigation planning requirements for states, tribes, and local governments in the Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000. Local governments must adopt a federally-approved hazard mitigation plan to apply for and receive federal hazard mitigation assistance funding. This is the fourth edition to the Hazards Mitigation Plan for the Thurston Region and the City of Tomwater Annex. The plan was first adopted in 2003. The plan's goals, policies, and actions, if implemented, will minimize losses, protect assets from future disasters. The plan's mitigation strategy includes regional actions to improve multi-agency coordination, so that's working with Thurston County and other jurisdictions. We build mitigation capabilities and strengthen resiliency across Thurston County. In addition, each plan participant produces an annex that prioritizes actions to minimize losses within the specific jurisdiction, which would be the City of Tomwater Annex. There's a little bit more. The Hazard Mitigation Plan must demonstrate that a community's proposed mitigation measures are based on sound planning process that accounts for the risks to and the capabilities of the individual jurisdiction. Local governments must conduct a planning process that satisfies FEMA requirements to receive FEMA plan approval. Now we can go to the next one. So this is a little bit of an overview. The city is susceptible to earthquakes, flooding, landslides, severe weather, and wildfires. The city annex identifies actions that are specific to the vulnerability of its community and is responsible for implementing the actions. The city has identified 20 initiatives to help mitigate and reduce impacts of natural hazards. The initiatives are categorized by initiative type. There's public outreach and information, plan coordination and implementation, data collecting and mapping, development regulations, hazard preparedness, hazard damage reduction, and critical facilities and replacement retrofit. On the next slide, this is an example, sorry, it's a little small, of what a sample mitigation initiative would look like. This is specific to the city of Tomwater, so it goes over the identification of the initiative, the naming convention, the status of it, the priority, what hazard it addresses, and relationship to plan goals, and implementation details, and the source for the initiative. It also identifies which is what lead department would be responsible for the initiative and how it relates to the plan goals. So how did staff choose the initiative? Staff used initiatives from the last update and some of these example plans to choose initiatives. So what we did is we incorporated initiatives within the CFP, which is the Capital Facility Plan, the Biennial Budget, the 2020 Water System Plan, the Schutze Flood Reduction Study, the City of Tomwater Comprehensive Plan, our Development Code Updates, and 2023 and 2024 City Work Programs. The city annex identifies potential city-specific projects designed to mitigate the impact of natural hazards that could be undertaken in the future, depending on funding, direction, and need. The projects, known as mitigation initiatives, are developed based on input from each city department. The lead planning team met with all departments to go through work plans, such as the CFP, the Water System Plan, department work plans and schedules, and the Comprehensive Plan Update, to incorporate those work plans into the Hazard Mitigation Plan and to create the initiatives. This is an overview of the plan structure. The plan itself is 144 pages, broken down into 12 sections. So just going over some of those sections real quick, we have the table...
Just as a quick clarification, this is actually just the annex to the larger plan on the regional level. The regional plan covers a lot of topics that are pertinent to all jurisdictions. So our annex focuses on those very specific Tomwater things. So it's a highly, it's more detailed, and it's not necessarily dealing with sort of broader issues that are covered by that larger one.
So just to quickly clarify, so if we're recommending to the council to adopt this resolution, does it apply just to the annex or to the overall?
It applies to the overall plan, but specifically for us, it's the actions contained within the annex that we're responsible for.
Okay.
So within the plan and the structure of, let's see. A community profile is a breakdown of our demographics, housing, employment, and income and development activity. Summary and adoption summarizes the Natural Hazards Mitigation Plan and the background and the need for it. The capability assessment is a jurisdiction's unique set of capabilities and tools that can be used as leverage to support hazard mitigation and increase resilience, such as the Capital Facility Plan, our Comprehensive Plan, our Building and Land Use Codes, et cetera. It's specific plans and actions that support hazard mitigation. So it's city-sponsored work plans and initiatives that we tie into the Hazard Mitigation Plan. The risk assessment is an evaluation of each jurisdiction's hazard, the probability multiplied by the weighted impacts to people, property, and economy. A risk summary for the city of Tomwater is on the next slide. Jurisdictions must have at least one mitigation action for each hazard. Previous plans only required one action per each hazard that ranked high. There were some new requirements that FEMA had passed for this update. So if we go to the next slide. Monitoring and maintenance. I apologize, I mistyped. We didn't go over the initiatives on this presentation. Prior to previous meetings, we did go over the initiatives for the hazards, such as the wildfire, earthquakes, flooding. So part of the plan update is, and a requirement, is monitoring and maintenance. The planning team is responsible for monitoring and maintaining the plan. That includes me and Brad in long-range planning. The planning team will create a process to track and monitor the initiatives and status. The annex and regional plan is a climate resiliency sub-element in the 2025 Comprehensive Plan Update. So again, we're tying in other work programs and plans for the city and incorporating it with the Hazard Mitigation Plan. And because it is going to be a sub-element in the 2025 Comprehensive Plan, we are going to be able to track and monitor the Hazard Mitigation Plan as well. This is an overview of the plan update and an example of the schedule. The Hazard Mitigation Planning Work Group started meeting in February of 2022. The work group meetings were facilitated by the Thurston Regional Planning Commission, TRP or TRPC. TRPC is the lead on creating the regional plan. The work group met monthly. And for almost two years, the work group has gone over risk assessments, new federal update requirements, initiative prioritization, benefit cost reviews, and hazard data. The city of Tomwater, let's see, the city annex was submitted with the core plan on November 27, 2023, to Washington Emergency Management Division, and they started their 30-day review. And an email from Washington Emergency Management Division, they said they would either send the review comments back to TRPC in the individual jurisdictions or forward the submitted to FEMA on December 28, 2023. I haven't heard back from either Washington Emergency Management Division or FEMA. So it's...
I believe it went on to FEMA, I'm just double-checking.
Okay.
I do know they had been in communication with TRPC, saying essentially, we didn't see anything, but no, we'll probably send it on, period. So my assumption is they did send it on.
Yeah. Yeah, no CC.
Well, I think, we've been involved with talking with them for a while, so they know the direction we've been going in, and it's not a substantial change from the direction we had been in.
Yeah, so, that puts us in the 45-day comment review period for FEMA. There is a possibility that FEMA may recommend revisions, it would be sent back to us for review. Next slide.
Turn back.
Oops, I like that slide so much.
That was just, yeah, that was just, so, our next steps. I would like to ask that we put this forward for a hearing scheduled for January 23rd, 2024. I do believe that the draft hazard mitigation plan, all 144 pages, was included in the packet.
And Terry, we did not print out the 737 pages of the packet this month. I told you, 237.
I do notice that there was one comment, and the comment is included in the package, but not our response to the comment. It seemed to me that we're leaving a big hole there if we don't close that out. And of course, I'm curious to know whether the owners were the ones that didn't notify the tenants.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't know the answer to that question. I did respond directly to the commentator, saying that there's something we will do. Once we have the plan, we'll make sure that goes out to those specific people, and they'll be notified. So, and I'm trying to remember if I included comment like that in the plan itself, so if you give me a moment, I can see if I can find that, but I, I did respond directly to him.
You just responded, saying that you'd let them know later, you didn't, you didn't tell them whether the owners had been notified.
So, a follow-up on that, I guess. Yeah, I do have notes here. We received the comment on November 11th of 2023. The comment expressed concern with existing development within a liquefaction area, and whether or not the residents living within that area were notified. I believe it was an existing mobile manufactured home park.
And I think in the plan itself, we included pictures from the liquefaction issues, part of that.
But some historic...
Moral process and responsibility for the city is to notify the owners, not, not to notify the tenants. It's the owner's responsibility to notify the tenants. Really, the question was being asked, and the question of whether the city even knows the answer to the question.
Yeah, it was...
There's at least one tenant who says that they were not notified.
Yeah, and it's within an existing development, so they had concerns, I believe it was with some of the systems, and updating the systems too, of...
Can we make sure and try to get a response to your question when we...
I think, I got, I got the response. In other words, the, the letter has been responded to, it's just that we didn't tell them anything new.
Yeah.
And really, we're not the ones who can answer that question. The only people who can answer that question are the owners of the property.
It looks like Commissioner Gorilla has a question or a remark.
Yeah, just one quick question. In the beginning, it mentions, beginning of your presentation, it mentions that the hazard mitigation plan was last updated in 2017, and there's a five-year requirement on that. So, does that mean that we're out of tolerance on it? And if so, are there any negative implications for us being outside of that five-year window?
We have not been told by FEMA that we're totally out of compliance. Obviously, we want to get this approved as quick as possible. I think we're within our window of response, for ensuring that we can still apply for grant funding and still be awarded grant funding during this period. I think if we go past this year, for example, I think we probably are in trouble. But I think we're probably okay, based on the conversations I've had with TRPC.
Perfect, thank you.
I have a couple of questions on the resolution, the draft resolution. I haven't submitted it yet at this point. And one has to do with, I think, section three of the resolution about receiving funding or other resources to implement. And I'm wondering, if little or no funding is available, are we still liable for something under, the city liable for not making improvements or responding properly or doing whatever if we haven't got money?
Yeah, that's a good question, and I don't have an answer immediately for that.
Or how does that work, I guess? And see, that seems like it might be of interest to council or the, or the legal team. And then, I'm wondering in section five of the resolution, and maybe, maybe throughout the hazard mitigation plan too, is, have lenders and insurers been involved? And, you know, how's the city or the wider region involving that part of our community? Banks that lend or make mortgages to properties, or insurers of properties? Are they engaged in helping us mitigate risks?
Yeah, that's actually another good question. I don't think they have a formal role through this process. This is a process identifying, taking action, not necessarily broader coordination with insurers and others to deal with that. So, there's, I think, two different mandates that are part of that process.
Okay. Well, I mean, you know, I'm just wondering then, you know, kind of the purpose of section five, where we're doing some fair amount of outreach to a lot of different players, and it seems like those are maybe some key ones. Just maybe something to think about. Okay. Clear points? I guess the question before us is scheduling a public hearing on this topic for our next meeting or some meeting pretty soon.
Yes, I would like to ask that this go forward for a hearing for January 23rd, 2024.
In order to get it in front of general government in February and so on.
Yep. We can take it forward to the GGC on February 14th, 2024.
Commissioner Tobias, I move that we schedule a public hearing on Resolution Number R 2024-001, Fourth Edition Hazard Mitigation Plan for Thurston County, for Thurston region, for our next planning commission meeting on January 23rd, 2024.
Oof, I know. Give a second.
I'll second that.
That was Commissioner Stab, thank you for the second, thank you for the motion. Any further discussion? All right, it's been moved and seconded to schedule a public hearing on Resolution Number R 2024-001, the Fourth Edition Hazard Mitigation Plan for Thurston Region, for our planning commission meeting of January 23rd, 2024. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing then, the motion, or, yes, the motion is approved, and you can schedule away for that public hearing. Thank you, everybody. More to come. Okay, so, I guess that's kind of our main bits there. Our next meeting is the 23rd, and we're gonna have a pretty full agenda at that one, it sounds like. Not only the, the public hearing on that one, but hearing again on the, having a work session on the floodplains, and, and maybe a little bit on that unconstitutional takings memo.
There'll be three items, I believe, on your agenda.
Maybe that one doesn't warrant a full thing, maybe it's just part of your, okay. Anything else? Does it go in the order?
Just say, I will not be here on February 13th. That's, that's the public, public meeting.
Oh.
We said the public hearing for January 23rd.
January 23rd, but you're not gonna be here for the first meeting in February. Okay.
You were thinking of, is that the floodplain one that is going to be the public hearing scheduled for February 13th?
That's the general government committee's on the 14th, I think, right?
Well, I, I think we intended to have the floodplain ordinance for the February 13th. EDC meeting's on the next day. Staff has to dress up appropriately for, if you want to watch.
Okay. If there's any changes to any of that, let us, let us, okay. Okay, then I guess our next item is whether to keep talking or not. Commissioner Tobias.
Commissioner Tobias, I motion we adjourn.
All right.
Second.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick, seconding. Good discussion, everybody, tonight. All in favor of adjourning tonight, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Have a great evening, be safe.
Take care.